Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we begin our study session. It's Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, 5:00 PM. This is the corporate fund budget amendment. It was on our agenda last week and we referred it to a study session because I guess there were some questions. Who would like to begin?
I'll begin. All right.
Go ahead.
Councilman Abdullah.
Linda, you're the next contestant on The Price is Right.
Come on down.
Come on down.
First can I give you guys a little bit of explanation of various budget amendments? Do you kind of have an idea? I think I've explained this once before, but I will explain it again. So when you do budget amendments, there's pretty much three different ways that you can do them. So, one way is, is if you have excess revenue, you can capture that excess revenue and offset it by an expense, which is what I'm doing for the AFG grant. We got the revenue in that wasn't in our budget and the expenditures in that weren't in our budget. So, the excess revenue is covering the excess expense because it's a grant. Another way of doing a budget amendment would be, within the same department, you can raise a budget and lower a budget. You see that in the example when I show you the overtime for the police department. I raised the overtime budget, lowered their salaries to offset it within that department. And then the other way I've done it, you can do it, is appropriating from fund balance. So if you don't necessarily want to take something out of a department because you're really not sure yet, which that's where I'm at with a lot of these, I appropriate from fund balance, but what happens at the year end, if we need to, it'll take money from our fund balance from the prior year. If we don't need it to, it doesn't do anything, but it puts that placeholder in there so that we are in compliance with having a balanced budget. So when I'm putting things that I'm appropriating from fund balance, it doesn't necessarily mean it's a guaranteed taking money from it. It's just a placeholder to show, you know, so when everything at the year end, if the revenues are still more than the expenditures, we didn't appropriate anything, or if it's, I'm asking for $400,000 and it ends up being $100,000, then they only take $100. So it's not a guarantee that I'm taking this money out of our savings. Okay? So then now if you want to ask me questions-
Hey, Councilwoman Abdullah.
So, I have other questions, but let's start with this one. You mentioned in regards to using expenditures, so like you did here with the MEDC grant and with the AFG grant.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. You're talking about when the money comes in, you're saying you're going to use it for expenditures because that money for a grant came in for a particular purpose, and you're saying that that particular purpose would be the one that would kind of wash it out.
Yeah, so if you look at the fire departments, there are two amendments of the expenditures. If you did the math on it, it literally matches the cost recovery in the revenue.
At the top.
So, yes. So basically, it's just a match for match.
Right.
It's matching the revenues with the expenditures. We got this grant, we've spent the money, they've given us the money since we've spent it, so now I'm just putting it into the budget so we are balanced.
So, a question for clarification. When you say "we've spent the money," it doesn't necessarily mean we've used up all the money. So let's use hypotheticals here, keep things simple. You got a grant that came in for a fire truck, or three fire trucks, well, in this case it might have been multiple fire trucks. You've purchased and paid for them already, or you have money allotted for them already?
We've purchased and paid for them already and we've received, because most grants are reimbursing, so whatever expenses he's had so far from this grant, he's been paid for, and that's what I'm, to the most part. There's still a little bit more that the numbers might totally not balance right now, but I'm only grabbing what we received and offsetting it with what we've spent so far.
But the council approved the expenditures.
Yes, the expenditures. I have motion numbers for where you approved the grant, where you approved all the expenditures. So this is just basically housekeeping.
Okay. So I had a couple of questions on, this is in regards to page 9B, the one that came in our last packet.
The amendment. Oh, this one, okay.
This one.
Yep, okay, yep.
All right. So, the first question I had, really in regards, and unfortunately he's not here, our corporate council. I know it's $60,000 over budget, and I know we pay pretty good sum. Is that because of the audit situation, or potential audit situation where he's been using for that? Is that normal? Because $60,000 is a pretty substantial amount based on what the budget is currently.
Okay, so, we haven't got, they haven't gone over budget. I just anticipate that this one is gonna go over budget at this point. And just so you have a background, last year, we ended up spending about $245,000 in legal fees, and that would be Gary Miyake, and then it would be the Secrest Group for all of the prosecutions and non-litigation. It's both groups of attorney fees. And we're still running in the similar pattern, and we only budgeted $200,000 for it, so I anticipate it's going more. That has nothing to do with the legal.
When you say "legal," you're talking about-
You're talking about-
The audit, right?
The audit, whatever, the legal defense for the litigation and stuff. That has nothing to do with the mayor's expenses at this point, but eventually that would be incurred in there as well.
So you're saying this is pretty comfortable for you because of the fact that in multiple years it's been in that particular ballpark?
Right now, that's what I'm putting in here. I do the biggest sweep of budget amendments usually like in the beginning of May for the rest of the fiscal year estimates, but for right now, I just want to put this in, see where it goes.
Because my concern is if we're consistently going over budget, then maybe we have to revisit how much we're budgeting for this.
Yeah, I agree. Like, we did increase from one year to the last for the 4% increase that you gave the attorneys, so like the year before it was 190 that was budgeted actually, even though it came in at about 240. And then we added the 10% at that point, or the 4%, which from the 190 to the 200 is a little bit under 4% because they increased their rates. That's all we increased. So yeah, well, we'll have to, when we do the budget process, I think we should put more in there.
Okay. The next one, you've already answered it for me when I spoke with you over the phone about a week or so back, but you mentioned the $15,000 for the controller, that's because, well, we're not allowed to say names. Let's just say one of the person-
There was a retirement that I didn't-
Early retirement, right.
Yep, so-
So that was fine.
We pay people out for retirement. That's the same case in the DPW. You'll see the same line in their department.
Right.
There was two retirements in that department that we didn't put in.
And the next one's really more for you and the chief. I know our chief is here, but I know we have for salaries and overtime, $550,000. And I know one of the biggest reasons, when I spoke with Linda Vance, the controller, maybe I'll finish hers first and I'll come back to yours, so we're not going back and forth, but I'm going to be addressing that with you if you don't mind, chief, the 550. The next one was, we're good. The ordinance, we're good. And the last question I had, before I go back to the chief, is on the capital outlay with DPW at $180,000. What specifically was that for?
So, in '18, '19, the council approved the, a new dump truck and a new High Ranger truck, but it didn't go on the books. We didn't receive it to a 1920 budget. So when they budgeted for that, it should have been a carryover, and that's the difference there.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. All right. And then the last question is for the chief, if you don't mind.
For me, Dave.
For you, I'm sorry. We never have trouble on the fire. These guys are easy, cheesy, no, no problems, right? Smooth sailing. So we have on here $550,000 that was used for overtime, and I know one of the biggest issues that we've got is a lack of hiring. As I last understood it, you were, I think, was it 12 police officers under what you'd like it to be, or 13?
In fairness, the budget that was submitted by the police chief would have covered everything. The council, Councilman Bassey made this motion to reduce the overtime in half and to put it in salaries with the intent that we would hire people, which doesn't really work. I'll let them address it, but that's what's causing this adjustment, because we can't find the individuals, we would hire them, but the other problem is, we're not running like a supermarket, where somebody's in the middle and their time's up and a new cashier comes in. When a police officer's on duty and he's got a, let's say, domestic trouble, he's gonna, those officers are gonna finish that. You don't just bring two new police officers.
Makes sense.
So consequently, it just, I think people should have talked to the chief more before they made that adjustment.
Yeah, that's just like if they, even if they get a call at the very beginning of the shift, they could be going on this for 14, 15 hours that day.
Yep, correct.
So they just don't stop at the end of their shift and go home and then pick it back up the next day.
So then with what the mayor just spoke about, with that being the case, then let me switch my question around a little bit. What do you feel as a chief needs to be done? And I have a pretty good idea now that I've heard this, but which direction do you think we need to go? Because I, okay, overtime I know is great for police officers, and I fully support the police officers, but obviously ideally, you know, I gotta look on my end, on the council end, we want to try to avoid overtime. Obviously, the solution is to hire more officers. So the question to you is, what solutions do you have in place other than just that? Or maybe expand on that? And what things are we doing as a, as a police department to be able to try to bring on additional officers? Because I know one of the things that I've spoken, I spoke with a couple of different people in the police field, and I'm talking about people up there in the police field, and they mentioned, and I've also read about it, I know in Detroit they have their own-
Recruitment Center.
Recruitment Center, what have you, and then they pay for you to be able to go get trained to become a police officer. Is that something maybe we should start looking into to be able to track the additional 12, 13, 14 officers that we need?
Well, this is a multifaceted answer, so bear with me. If you remember several years back, we came to the council with a plan to go forward with fulfilling the oddity that, so to speak, occurred with the amount of people retiring in a specific amount of time very closely together, which caused a great deal of these vacancies. I was researching it a little bit before we came, and I think we've hired 35 brand-new officers since I became a captain in 2015. I really feel that we're moving along very well, and you have to look at it from this perspective. Once we're at capacity with officers, you might have a trickle effect after that, one or two here. It's not this big glutton of retirements that occurred that we had to replace. So I think we're doing the right things, everything's going along as it should, and hiring a police officer is not as easy as getting an applicant and putting them on work the next day. When they get hired, there's a significant amount of cost upfront between uniforms, guns, training. They don't just get a set of keys and told to go patrol. They have to go through a field training process. Some of them make it, some of it don't. The hiring process in and of itself, there's psychological reviews, there's physicals that need to be done. All these things bear a significant cost amount to them. In addition to that, we've had a significant amount of promotion. In fact, out of the 18, 28 supervisors we have, there's only three that haven't been promoted in the last five years. Everybody else is brand-new. So there's a lot of movement within the police department that I think is going to come to rest, and the dust will settle here within the next year. We're doing very well. We've interviewed probably, I think we have at least 13 new applicants that have applied, but again, I caution that we can't hire 13 people at one time.
Right.
We have to hire them, get them trained, have another wave, and so forth. And I think we're doing very well. I think the interest is in Dearborn Heights. People are coming here, they're applying, and I really feel that within the next year, year and a half, we should be pretty well set.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Muscat.
Again, for the chief, but isn't this what the drop program was, I mean, we've had the drop program a long time. Shouldn't have this have covered that?
No, you're, there are two different animals there, and that's-
Well, I mean, you know who's gonna retire. I mean, you got a drop program-
You know who's gonna retire within seven years.
Correct.
They don't have to stay seven years. Some people have chose to do three, some people five, some people the full seven. It all depends on the employee. It's their option.
Well-
It does give us a better perspective on who is going at what time. We know a finality of when somebody will retire.
Coming from a law enforcement family, whatever, all you're saying is things that I've heard constantly about, nobody wants to be a police officer anymore. My son-in-law retired from one city to another city, and as, even as a 25-year vet, he had to go through training, had to have, be proficient in his handgun, take physicals. So, yeah, you're right. I understand the process.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's not getting hired one day, going to work the night-
Correct. Correct.
Councilman Costin, did you have a question?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just add to what Councilman Abdullah said and what Councilman Muscat said. I mean, the economy right now is very heated up. It's at all-time high, so it's hard to hire anybody. I mean, the ads for any position, very difficult. Chief Brogan, how many firefighters, if any, are we down?
So, we went through what the police department was going through maybe five years ago, where we were really struggling to get people, and now, come next year, we're gonna have about seven people retire. First one is gonna be this March, and so now we're gonna be struggling to try to fill those spots as well. I think there, right now on the MPFFU website, there's 19 or 23 fire departments that are actively hiring, and they've been hiring, and they just have the applications open because, but right now, to answer your question, we're not down anybody, we're full. But we're heading towards this very similar problem.
I think the mayor will remember years ago, like under Ruth Canfield, and we had a tremendous problem with the overtime, with the firefighters.
Yeah, our overtime budget was over a million dollars. We were down to 35 firefighters at one point, which is about half of what we need, so.
And it was, I give credit because we sat down with the firefighters and they taught us, and with the chief as to how to reduce it, and labor management working together reduced it considerably.
Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel?
Chief Fire up there, how many firefighters do we presently have employed?
59.
59. And how do we, I'm gonna ask Petrie this also, how do we compare with other cities as far as pay rate?
Well, our whole, our department, we actually draw people from other, our starting pay isn't as high. Our starting pay is around 35, but we have our, our benefit package is better for the majority of the departments around here. There's very few that have all of the things that we can offer if you know how to look at contracts. And so when we have people that, when we do open for applications, most of the people we're hiring are coming from other departments. We're hiring guys that sometimes have six, seven years on at other departments that are changing to come over to our department. So, we've done a lot of good things, we maintained a lot of benefits that other departments have lost over the years, including the pension is probably the biggest one, so.
Yeah, I've heard that from talking to firefighters. Okay, thanks.
Councilman Muscat?
This is for the controller. I received this and I-
I'm sorry, Wenzel still says, I'm sorry to realize it.
Chief Petrie, the same, can you-
Okay, right now we're staffed for 61. We're currently at 45. Our pay, I would say comparatively of the departments, is between probably $8,000 to $10,000 lower than a lot of the departments at starting pay.
Like Chief Brogan said, the benefit package, how's that?
That is probably the main draw between the drop program and the defined benefit country, or the pension plan is the biggest draw to coming to Dearborn Heights right now for, like Chief said, we have a lot of people that have come from other departments, and that was from my, heard through the grapevine, the main reason that they came here.
Well, he, Chief Brogan said that most of his new employees are, come from a different department?
Yes, we've had quite a few as well.
Typical with you two?
Yes.
Is it, okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Muscat, sorry.
I want to thank you for sending this, after I sent you an email and you sent me something back and you explained and-
Oh yeah, my little spreadsheet that had the little-
So I want to thank you for that.
Cliff notes on the side, basically telling you what my rationale was.
I didn't know if I sent you back a thank you or not, but I'm-
I don't remember.
I don't remember either, but if I didn't, thank you. When I first got this, I'm saying, what the hell is it? I don't even know what it is. And as the Councilman Abdullah was going through it, I was getting somewhat a gist for it. But what I've never understood is retirement prior years.
Okay, so-
What is retirement prior years?
Okay, and that all departments have it, but when someone initially, most people that retire or go into the drop, it's a multiple-year payment plan.
Now, this right here is for the police, or it's coming out of a controller?
Well, that would be my department, and I only have one. I don't have a breakdown where the police and fire actually have retirement first year, and then everyone else has the retirement prior years.
Okay.
So, in all of the other departments, if Elizabeth, if Marion retires in Elizabeth's department, this line that I'm using would be the same line, Elizabeth. It's the only line. But when we pay someone out their excess vacation and sick and such, then it's in a three-payment thing, so she'll get three installments.
But that's my question, what is it? Since they're gonna be, they've got their pension and benefits.
They get paid out for unused sick and vacation time and those kind of items.
I wish that would be more, for me, I would need an explanation like you gave. Now I understand what it is.
So, yeah, so the one person in my department, I did not, I mean, and most people don't give you a year in advance to let you know that they're retiring. At least with police and fire, they kind of have a finite date, even though it's still between five and seven years or whatever. I have no idea that far in advance in our budget, and I had a retirement, and same thing with John Salmy, he had two that weren't announced until a couple months prior to the retirement.
So when you're short money, where does the money come from when you say, okay, I'm gonna have a budget amendment?
So, like I said, with my department, there's not, there's not a whole lot of given, our department, so in my department in particular, that's why the appropriation of the fund balance is being utilized for this particular scenario. But since the fund as a whole is what we make sure that we're in check, not necessarily individual departments, we try to keep the individual departments good, but if not, it has to be the fund as a whole.
So come from the fund balance?
Yeah, well, not necessarily the fund balance. At the end of the year, if really there isn't enough revenue that covers the expenditure, then it would come from the fund balance. But me asking for it, saying, I don't have the money in my department, because really all I have is base wages. There's nothing there to cover that $15,000. So, I'm asking to appropriate from fund balance. If the police or fire, at that point at the end of the year, might have a surplus in any, any department, because when the auditors look at it, it's the budget as a whole, not departmentalized, even though I try to do the budget amendments departmentalized, the fund as a whole has to have a balance.
How many times do we have a department that doesn't spend all their money? I mean, I'm sure they all spend all their money, right?
I think most of them, give or take a little bit. I mean, regular, like, I mean, like office supplies. Like in my department, there's like five or six items, let's just say. So there is like trainings or something, and then you got office supplies, and we might have budgeted $2,000 for office supplies and only came out at 800, but the year prior we did hire. It could be little pieces of it, but most departments fall under their budget, but not like, I don't, I won't fall 1,500, $15,000, there's just not enough in my life.
I don't let people say, department heads, oh, I got 50,000 left, let me spend it on something. I won't allow that.
But doesn't that affect their budget for the following year, though? If it, you know, they say, I want $2 million, and they only spend $1,500,000, you're not gonna short them $500,000 for the following year.
I will not, but I don't want people pushing expenditures-
Just to spend the money.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I understand that.
And we do evaluate, like now we're working on the budget process, and we do evaluate each department to see where they're landing. So, let's just say our postage line, this year it's very high because clerks have an election, so they're sending out a lot of ballots. So this year's postage budget could be way higher than next year's because there's not gonna be any elections, not to say that there isn't, but you know what I'm saying? So we do kind of look at that, and we don't just arbitrarily put numbers in there. We kind of, at least I do, I evaluate where we're at when we do the budget to see if I can raise or lower each budget line. You know what I mean? I don't just say I'm gonna do it and then have it in there.
And in, here the police salary, you say you took away $550,000 from their salary to put it in overtime.
Mm-hmm. Which is a safe assumption, because we didn't hire the officers, so there's extra money in the salaries because we're 13 officers short, even though we budgeted for the 13 officers.
Okay.
And I could have really very well done it for the crossing guards if I thought about it, but yeah, because it's the same scenario. There's still, there's excess at this point.
So in other words, if they hire, if they hired the other 13, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Correct.
Yeah, but I mean, like, right now, we know, because we're more than halfway into the year, even if we did, we budgeted them at full year salaries, and it's gonna be only partial. So I know there's a little bit of money there that we can play with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Abdullah?
So, this is for Chief Petrie again. Gotta bother you today.
Oh, no, please.
So, a lot of things that we're seeing with police departments right now, and you mentioned it earlier, because of this overtime, you're having a hard time hiring or getting people to qualify, et cetera, et cetera. And obviously, at one point, we did raise the amount of salaries for starting police officers. But now you're starting to see more and more of that, where I know just most recently, Detroit raised it to 42,000, starting salary, and then Farmington Hills raised it, I could be off on the number, but I think it was like 52,000 or 53,000 to try to attract additional police officers. How much, how much of a difference? Obviously, it makes some difference, but is that gonna be the end-all? Is that something that you think would work very favorable for us as far as, you know, morality in the police department, and as far as getting more people to come into our, you know, our department by maybe making it at 45,000 or 48,000? Because I, I tell you, me personally, I'd be in favor in having additional pay to be able to attract more, and then be able to select from a much bigger bucket, the best of the best.
Yeah, I mean, you want to do, you want to be comparable to other departments at the very least, and even Detroit at 42, I would say is still low, if they're coming up to that level. I mean, we're at 40 to start, I believe, but the-
They were, because of their, yeah, they were in emergency management, because of that, they were in, as I recall, I think it was like 30,000 or 31,000, so they were very, very low, and they've just raised it to 42 this year.
Right. And that's obviously a significant amount of money, given the size of their force. Like I said, I think increasing the pay along with the benefit package that we have makes us a stellar department to work for, and as soon as we get these next few individuals hired, I think we're gonna be good for quite a while.
What about a cadet program? How important is that? Because I know Dearborn started that one, and I know some other cities have that. How effective is that?
Again, I would love to have that. That would be, when I started as a police officer, we did have cadets. They ran the fire dispatch, police dispatch, cell area, and front desk, and it was a great program. I can't remember why we did away with it, but they went to a, an actual dispatch service instead. I think it is, it's a good program. It's definitely worth lurking into. But again, being the last few years that we've been somewhat crippled with the amount of employees that we have to work with, that's something that I'm sure we would want to look into, along with the multitude of other things that are going on.
Okay.
And Mr. Wenzel, just, when you asked, we have 61 police officers. From the chief on down, we're staffed at 89.
Oh, wait a minute.
61 and staffed at 89?
Correct.
So it'd been 61 on the road, right?
There's 61 patrol officers, and with supervision, we total 89. Right.
You know, I have a question too. On the crossing guards, if you have 60,000 here, does the school system reimburse you for any of that?
That's our responsibility.
Okay. I was curious. Thank you. Any further questions?
I was gonna ask that question about the crossing guards. That's paid out of the police budget?
Yes, that's under state law, we're required to take care of that.
Now, how do you, how do you determine the pay for that?
That's something that we've discussed too, and we've also had hard times getting crossing guards, that determining a pay for that would be using comparable factors and things of that nature.
Are you staffed enough in that area?
No, no. A lot of times we have patrol officers that have to handle the crossing guard duties, because we don't have crossing guards for that either, and that comes out of our overtime budget sometimes. We have to staff the corners.
Yeah, is there a training program that involves that, or how's that work, if someone wanted to be a crossing guard? I think I might know some people that would like it, is, what's the criteria?
Then have them apply, you know, they can contact our traffic sergeant, Nick Hutchins, and we would love to look at him, we're always looking for applicants.
The complaints I've heard about that is, you work early in the morning, and you work around 2:00.
So you gotta go home and then come back.
And they, and there's that split, unlike a regular job, where you're there and you put in your six-hour, and, and I've asked some people who were crossing guards, and they told me that's why they didn't do it, because they found it very interruptive to their day, that, that slot, you know, and that, that's the drawback on it.
For a retired person?
Well, a retiree, and, and a few years ago, the unemployment was high enough that we had people who were supplementing their income doing that, and then with the full employment, we lost quite a few of those people.
Yeah, like a councilperson supplementing their income.
Okay, any further questions?
I'm doing that.
If I might, Madam Chair, I had asked you for about 15 minutes, if you could set up a closed session, but I want to address it to all seven of you, but you need to know about something that, that was brought to my attention, and I, but I'd like to talk to all seven of you about it and let you know.
Yep, that was correct, I did get the email last Thursday, and I asked you to let me know in regards to what the closed session would be for, and then I can schedule it.
Well, I will, I would just as soon address it to all seven of you, I don't even want to put it in writing.
In order to have closed session, we have to make sure it's in compliance and doesn't violate the open meetings act.
I checked with Mr. Miyake, he definitely does not.
Then, if you tell me, I will keep it in confidence.
No, I'll let, I'll tell all of you, you're a group, I'll tell all of you at the same time.
Okay, any further questions from the table? At this time, I'll open it up to, thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
And Linda, you're doing a good job.
Thank you. Okay, any comments from the audience? State your name, and you have three minutes.
I would like to know what's the impact of the overtime of the police officers in the future for those who are in the drop programs? Is this going to increase their compensations? Because my understanding, they take some of the highest-paid years to calculate some of their compensation. Anybody can answer what is the effect?
If I understand your question right, when someone enters the drop, their pension is fixed, and so, so nothing changes if there's any overtime incurred after that. Once your pension numbers are set, then that's, that's where they're at for the drop.
Okay, they don't calculate overtime, which is added to their salary?
If they do, that, that is totally, yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with the drop program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And in further answer to Mr. Abdallah's question, a lot of cities, Taylor's the poster child, they spike their pension, so if they get their last two or last three, they get a lot of overtime, and then their pension is based on those last two or last three. They could, let's say they made 50,000 every year, but then they somehow worked it, so for two years, they made 80,000 with the overtime, their pension will be based on 80,000. The term is spiking their pension.
Is, controller, is that correct? It would include overtime?
No, this is, if not somebody in the drop, this is, once you're in the drop, your retirement is set.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, one of the chiefs can probably answer this. So, do we have a highest number of years, like, prior to your, you get into the drop program, that you would, you would use to calculate your, your pension?
Yeah, I believe if I remember correctly, it's been a long time since I did it, but I think it's your best three out of 25, out of all time, and that's how the pension's calculated. But once it's calculated, it's, that's it, you're not gonna get a recalculation of your pension.
But if you knew you were going into the drop in five years, you'd want to work as much overtime as possible, get your highest three years as possible?
Theoretically, that would be correct, yes.
Does that work for the fire department also, chief?
Yeah, it's all the same.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
How is overtime divvied up? I mean, isn't there like a overtime equalization, where everybody gets a certain chance to work overtime, where not just three or four people get to work a whole bunch of overtime?
Yeah, that's correct, but there's multiple ways of getting overtime, as you had mentioned, you work over on a shift, you have things of that nature, an overtime detail at the high school, during a basketball game, there's a multitude of things that overtime can be obtained from.
But I'm just saying, like, the high schools, that would be, like, maybe come off a list of who's next in line?
Correct, correct.
But overtime can't be held by a person that's made a few arrests in one week, that he just has to take care of all that paperwork, so he's gonna get all of that overtime.
Well, if it's an arrest that he's held over for, it's personally that specific officer.
So there's no, no change in that, he has to do that.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, all right, we have, we have public comment at this time, any further public comment? Okay, I guess that ends our study session, thank you.
Counselor?
We need to have a study session on our, on our studio, we need to put something on real quick.
Understandable, but right now, this study session is done.
Yes.
Thank you.